Good evening. The time is now 5:39 and we will be starting our meeting. Please enter the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God.
Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Perth Amboy Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the bulletin board in the administrative headquarters building mailing notices to the home tribune, Eldario La Prensa, our city clerkship, as well as all other persons requiring notification pursuant to the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law.
Rule call.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Marte.
Present.
Ms. Melendez.
Present.
Ms. Odoyela. Mr. Keles.
Present.
Vice President Gonzalez.
Present.
President Peralta.
Present.
We have a call. No student representative.
Thank you. Since we do not have our student representatives today, we will now move on to presentations.
Good evening. This evening, we will begin with peer mediation and conflict resolution mental health grant by Ms. Devault, who is the director of counseling. If she'd come up for a moment and just share her presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. The Department of School Counseling and Related Services is proud to share the district's experience with the Peace Works program so far for the 2024 school year. The Peace Education Foundation focuses on conflict resolution curriculum and training. The Peace Works curriculum teaches valuable life skills, mostly in the area of conflict resolution and peer mediation, which got our attention to this program first and foremost, but also on pro-social skills, violence prevention, character, and ethical values, as well as bullying prevention, respect, empathy, and tolerance for all peoples and diverse cultures. The Peace Works program is designed to provide all students access to the conflict resolution and peacemaking curriculum. So this is a true point of pride for the department because once all students are familiar with these concepts, then we identify the peer mediators and we provide an additional level of training to those mediators that will then service the district. But first, all students K through 12 are receiving the important life skills of conflict resolution through this program. Perth Amboy Public Schools has been introducing conflict resolution and peacemaking skills to all of our students through the use of the counseling department's monthly themes shown here. These themes incorporate school-wide initiatives, classroom lessons, and small groups to teach specific lessons throughout each of our buildings. So here are some examples of the work from our students. This slide shows September, October, and November. The three themes were community building, peace rules, and gratitude. So you can see some of the work happening inside of the buildings. We opened up the school year with community building. Of course, this is age appropriate, so it looks a little bit different whether you're in the elementary schools, the middle schools, or the high school. Our elementary students did this or that game where they were able to identify similarities with students at the same time as expressing differences. For peace rules, we really focused on kind of introducing the foundational work that'll be our peer mediation program. And for the month of November, you can see here, one of our programs at the high school, they did a giving tree, a giving thank tree, where they, each leaf represents a form of gratitude for our high school students that they wrote. And you'll see, this came from Scholl Middle School, our gratitude gram. So students were able to give grams of gratitude, not only to their peers, but to staff members, just throughout the building. It was a really, really special time. Next up is December, January, and February. Again, you might see from these two slides that this entire program is provided in both Spanish and English. So these activities show that as well, reaching again all of our students. February was just the month of empathy. We did an activity of walking a mile in someone else's shoes. This was really done well throughout the entire district, from kindergarten through 12th grade with the age-appropriate activities that really came from understanding each other and walking in another student's shoe. So what's next for this program? The school counselors completed two training workshops in the fall and winter. They're now ready to train our mediators. The mediators were selected and identified through these school-wide programs. And they're entering a 15-week, once-per-week training where they'll then be able to start serving and providing peer mediators to all students that now have the groundwork of these conflict resolution skills. This is also going to go, you know, to the end of the school year. And because of it being a district-wide initiative, we're able to pick off right away in September and just continue with this program and build on the skills from year after year. Lastly, I just want to note that thanks to the NJDOE School-Based Mental Health Grant, the district can combine efforts now on the topics of social emotional wellness throughout these initiatives. You'll see ideas and themes crossing here. So this grant creates additional opportunities for the district, the department, on the theme of conflict resolution. And for now, our peer mediators and this program moving forward. Some items that will be able to fund through the grant is staff professional development, materials for our peer mediators, school-based therapeutic tools that we're currently looking into. So these are all things that we're excited to give back to our students, to help the leaders that were identified as peer mediators, but also reach each and every student kindergarten through 12th. Thank you to central administration, our Board of Education, and all our building administrators and support staff, our counselors, for the support in continuing this program to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. George because he was the catalyst for us really moving forward with a conflict mediation program in our school district and also Ms. Devault for connecting that to the Melton Health Grant, which is... Katie, can you just, Katie? How much did we, just talk about that for one, like 30 seconds? What the grant was, how much funds we got, and how we were selected by the state to be involved in this?
Absolutely. So our district was one in 11 school districts chosen throughout New Jersey. We are working with representatives through some of the top mental health programs throughout the state. We have access to 1.5 million over the next five years, but it's continuing to grow. And just in the efforts and kind of more mental health programs that are jumping in here. So it's really exciting. We have a Navigate 360 program that allows risk and threat assessment work where we provide top of the line, and we're pulling in mental health specialists on how we can serve students in those moments when it comes to those topics. It also is giving us translation services, so all of our material, our resources, we take pride in ensuring that it's not only in English, it's in Spanish, and maybe other needs as well, other languages if they come up. So we're going to have access to programs where we can streamline that, as well as additional screeners. Some people here might be familiar with our SEL screener. We provide that K to eight, but we're now bringing in a new screener that's specific for high school students where we're able to identify different levels of depression, possible anxiety. We're able to use that data, and that's going to then drive our responses. The data-driven responses from our students are now going to give them a high level of resources and bringing in their parents and their family so we can continue those resources into the future and even beyond Perth Amboy.
Thank you. So I wanted to just tie something together again, which is that first, Ms. Devault, if you haven't realized it, is an extremely caring individual. She's the director of counseling. She takes her role very seriously, bringing support to students. Mr. George was speaking about what can we do to have students articulate to one another how they can go through many different things that may be that may be in front of them that are not allowing them to really confront issues that are problematic. So we combined the two of these, because it was funded, with the state grant to give us some funds for conflict mediation. And this is exactly where we are right now. We're going to continue the process for the remainder of the year. We're going to be delivering this to the new high school, obviously. I'm going to ask that Mr. Wilson and Dr. Pepe, if you could tomorrow, on the website, put not only the PowerPoint, but the video that was created of students that spoke about what conflict mediation meant to them so that the public is aware of exactly not only what we're saying, but what children are saying. And I think it's a little teaser for you to recognize that what you're going to be hearing from the students speaks to the value of this program because it's from the mouth of babes that they're talking about how this program has helped them. So to Mr. George, sir, thank you, and to Ms. Devault, doc, I'm sorry, Ms. Devault, thank you very much as well. Next, you're going to be hearing from, as you're going to see this evening in the next two presentations and the one that just passed, we have very dynamic directors. Not only that, they're extremely intelligent and very caring. We're going to be talking about summer school programs with Dr. Jessica New and Dr. Courtney Pepe.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Courtney Pepe, and I'm going to be speaking about the various programs that we are offering in district during the summer of 2024. The district's diverse array of programs will ensure that each participating child's summer experience is filled with friendship, academic enrichment, and the joys of exploration and discovery. This slide highlights our pre-K and elementary summer school programs. They support various interests and abilities so that all students can grow. We have programs for TBE bilingual students, gifted and talented students, students with disabilities, dual-language students, and then students who may need some academic remediation. Please note that the summer theater program listed on this slide is available for students in grades three through 12. This next slide lists the summer programs that we are offering at the middle school, high school, and adult school level in district. Please note that the extended school year program listed on this slide will be offered to qualifying students in grades pre-K through 12 based upon their individualized education plan. Some additional additive values of our summer program. Academic advancement for our wonderful students, important social and emotional connections for the children, and additionally, we provide breakfast and lunch every day with these programs. Thank you for your time and attention. And for more information about these wonderful summer programs, you can visit the main page of our website, www.paps.net.
I apologize. I was looking for something that I wanted to denote. I'll say this, though, about summer school. I know that Dr. Pepe gave a very quick presentation, but I can assure you the work that's behind that is certainly not quick. I want to thank Dr. Medina. I want to thank Mr. Rodriguez. I want to thank the directors and the principals, all of them. What we, if you listen to three words that were stated by Dr. Pepe, one was friendly, enrichment, and academic. Our children, the students of this community this summer, as they have for the past decade, will have a robust environment that will allow them to be connected to staff during the school, during the summer, so that they have a place to have an opportunity to not only continue their education, but to have a home, safe meals. And we're going to get more into that in May and June as we start to put the program out there. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank so many people and in the hours that go into putting this. I think over a million dollars, federal dollars, are being used to support students of this district over the course of the summer so they come back in September prepared and ready to go. So I really just wanted to make mention of that. Before we talk about this next presentation, I would like to mention that we need to put more accolades in this community and in many communities as to what we were just able to accomplish with ESPN and Special Olympics and Unified Sports. This district is a national champion. We had a visit from ESPN and from many different people that were high-ranking individuals, I would say, in the nation if you were to hear who some of them are, as to what they saw about our school district. You'll hear and see a video after the presentation, and I'd like you to please really listen intently to what is being stated by Dr. Shriver, who is a renowned individual in our world of communication and looking for unified sports, and what they found when they came to this district unsolicited, their own words. Without further ado, Dr. New, I'd like to thank you, and also Marcia Stillo for your work in this area.
Okay. Good evening. So Unified Sports are athletic competitions that are inclusive of students with and without disabilities. Perth Amboy High School was recently recognized as a Unified Champion Banner School by Special Olympics and one of three schools in the nation to be selected as a top ESPN honor roll recipient. Perth Amboy High School is also the first public school in the state to receive this ESPN honor. So in attendance at our celebration on Friday, March 8th, was over 35 welcome guests from ESPN, including Kevin Martinez, vice president, Mary Anderson, president of Special Olympics New Jersey, Coley Harvey, who was our ESPN correspondent, and Dr. Tim Shriver, chairman of Special Olympics and disability rights advocate. Our lower gym filled with hundreds of students from freshman academy, PLP, and main campus, staff, parents, and included outstanding performances from our NJROTC band, choir, cheerleaders, and of course, our mascot.
Okay. One of our unified pairs, and Dr. Shriver gave a very engaging and heartfelt address to our audience. Our student versus staff basketball game started and was filled with moments of great anticipation, laughs, and tears. The game was commented by our guest speaker, ESPN correspondent Coley Harvey, and PAHS staff member. Following the student and staff basketball game, our athletes and coaches very excitedly displayed the official United Sports Champion banner. Thank you. And to share more about the day's great event, we now have a video to share.
This is a very special group for what you stand and represent. This program that we have in our school is something near and dear to my heart, much more than perhaps many of you know. With power and differences, you have to also explain the value of that.
No parent, when they have their child growing up at two, and three, and four years old, and they look at their child and they see a child who has special gifts, they'll never think to themselves, there's no place for my child because they will have seen here in Perth Amboy that everybody has a chance to shine, and everybody, everybody is welcome. Thank you very much.
Perth Amboy High School in New Jersey, the school honored by ESPN today for their work promoting the Special Olympics. Perth Amboy recognized today as an ESPN honor roll school. They also received a national banner from the Special Olympics. The school started their Unified Sports program three years ago, and now they boast unified soccer, track, and basketball teams. That's spectacular. In the years ahead, they hope to add even more teams and host more tournaments. They say they're incredibly proud of today's honor.
That banner means so much to us because it really symbolizes that we are an inclusive school district who really, really cares about our students and really wants our students to feel like they belong.
Do you want to say anything about the program? Okay. So I was immensely impressed with the enthusiasm of what took place in that gymnasium. It was palpable, wouldn't you say, Ms. Peralta?
It was. It was amazing. Good job.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say good job to all the administrations that was there, the teachers, security, everyone that was there. Everyone really did enjoy this moment. I wish you guys could have all been there. Unfortunately, you know, you weren't able to make it, but it was a beautiful, such an impactful day. And I'm glad that everyone was able to see at least a glimpse of what occurred that afternoon.
I wanted to also state that Dr. Shriver not only leads the Special Olympics, but this has been something that's been going on with the Kennedy Foundation for a number of years. As many of you know, his mother was intimately involved in this, and they have been actively doing this, not only with the Shriver family, but the Kennedy Foundation, Kennedy family, to promote Special Olympics. To hear his words that everyone will know that in Perth Amboy, children matter, is just something that should be taken to heart. They are in their 10th year, and we've been together for 10 years, and doing this is a culmination of something that cannot be understated. We will be pushing this out to everybody, obviously, this evening and tomorrow. We ask that everyone continue to push this out to all of your friends and neighbors to celebrate so many wonderful things that are happening in this school district that sometimes goes unnoticed that we are aware of, but that we need to make this nation aware of. And we have national recognition like this. It is a recognition that we're doing something right in Perth Amboy. So thank you to all the staff, but especially to the students. The basketball game was great. In case you're wondering, the students won. But it was not given to them. I can tell you that. The staff was trying to win. It was a pretty interesting game all the way to the end, but they arrived at the last moment. We're going to be going into a meeting open to the public for a moment, but I'd like to take the liberty, Ms. Peralta, of doing something a little bit different. I know that we have two students that are here to afford them an opportunity and make it one of my presentations. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to invite two of our wonderful students up at this point. I met with them last week to talk about their concerns and their ideas about the uniform policy. I can tell you that they were not only articulate, I think they're great representations of the school district, very, very sweet, kind, energetic, and thoughtful. So I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to share today. Come on up to the mic. You have as much time as you want. That's why I wanted to give it to you now and not later.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Roman, Assistant Superintendents, and Board Security. Thank you for your willingness to listen. We would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Janelle Torres. This is my companion Vanessa Rosario. We are currently juniors at the Perth Amboy High School. Vanessa and I are here to address uniform concerns that students at the high school have. We took our time and did our research and would like to share our findings with you. We would like you to acknowledge that the students at PACS have signed a petition to remove the school uniform expressing their desire for more freedom in their dress code.
We actually have a petition right here that has approximately 276 signatures. I don't know if you guys would want to see it.
At the end, we'll take them and we'll make sure that the board gets it.
We would appreciate that our voices be heard and that our individuality and expression promised by the First Amendment of the Constitution be respected. Finding a solution that addresses both the students' wishes and the school's standards will be key in ensuring a positive outcome for everyone involved. Students feel that the current uniform policy does not allow for freedom of expression. I understand that inappropriate attire among students is also a shared concern of ours. In my opinion, a dress code strikes a balance between individual expression and maintaining respect, fostering comfort and confidence. Allowing a dress code ensures that clothing choices are appropriate and respectful, minimizing distractions, and promoting a positive school atmosphere. This combined approach creates a welcoming environment where students feel empowered to express themselves while respecting common standards of decency and professionalism. Many debates over school uniforms revolve around their impact on students' learning and well-being. While uniforms may promote unity and discipline, we argue they restrict comfort and self-expression. Allowing students to choose their clothing fosters comfort and confidence, potentially improving focus on academics. Autonomy in attire reduces self-image concerns and classroom distractions. Striking a balance between a positive learning environment and individual freedom creates a more inclusive atmosphere for academic success. I will pass it to Vanessa Rosario.
Some may argue that uniforms reduce violence. Others believe they don't. What I know is uniforms, while fostering unity, don't address the root cause of violence among students. Violence can still occur due to deeper societal and physiological issues unrelated to attire, such as personal disputes or mental health concerns. Moreover, students can find ways to engage in violent behavior despite uniforms, whether through concealed means, on or off-campus incidents. Therefore, uniforms allow alone or not comprehensive solutions to preventing violence. Schools should implement approaches addressing underlying factors like promoting positive relationships, providing mental health support, and teaching conflict resolution skills for safer environment with or without uniforms. We are also aware of the disadvantages of some students. We propose to implement solutions for all students at Perth Amboy High School. One way is by having a clothing drive. Organizing a clothing drive will allow students and the school community to contribute gently, by contributing, gently use clothes for students who may or may not have clothing or have access to resources. Mobilizing these efforts creates a compassionate and supportive environment where students feel valued regardless of their circumstances. We are here asking you that you take out the uniform policy and create a dress code, which will help us feel more comfortable and have a positive learning environment, allow us to have freedom of expression guaranteed by the Constitution, and help with our mental health. Thank you for your willingness to help, to listen to us today.
And we would like to ask you guys to look at our clothing and figure out what is wrong with what we are wearing today. Thank you.
Thank you. I promise you, as we spoke, I already made the board president aware of our conversation. We're going to bring this to the policy, just hang for a second. I'm going to bring this to the policy committee. We're going to take a look at the policy. We're going to have a conversation about the policy, and then we'll invite you back to let you know what that means or does not mean as it relates to decisions that were made or not made. But your approach from the onset is beautiful. Thank you for representing the district the way that you do.
Meeting open to the public for discussion of agenda items and non-agenda items. There will be only one public participation session at this meeting. At this time, comments are invited on any matter. Public participation shall be governed by policy number 0167. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed
All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No member of the public may address or question board members individually. Although the board encourages public participation, it reserves the right to the presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The board discourages the public from speaking negatively about any employee, administrator, or student. Individuals can be held personally liable for defamatory or libelious statements made at public meetings. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by members of the public. Comments regarding employees, administrators, or students can be legally responded to by any member of the board or administration.
Good evening, Lynette, uh, the District Representative for the Perth Amboy Federation. I'd first like to congratulate the Perth Amboy High School for being the national unified champion school. I would also like to congratulate our cheerleading team for being the state champions. Congratulations. And a shout out to Elizabeth Adabola for being our state, uh, wrestling champion for the girls. So, congratulations to all of them. Great job to the students. And congratulations also to all the staff members and teachers and coaches that helped them get to where they were. I just have one question tonight. The only question I have is, um, about our contract was settled, um, was approved here at the November board meeting. We're still waiting for a hard copy because we need to go through it and make sure everything, you know, fits so that we could put it out to our people. They're really asking, the staff is really asking for that contract, so we're asking if you could please expedite the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Board Secretary. My name is Ken Gonzalez. I reside at 110 High Street. Um, by the way, 20 years ago, I was the board president, so it's nice to be back very briefly. Um, today I'm speaking with regards to the Perth Amboy High School Hall of Fame. I currently volunteer my time on the Hall of Fame Committee, and I just want to make a quick public service announcement. The Hall of Fame is going to be doing inductions this year, specifically on May the 16th at 5:00. That's a Thursday. We are hoping members of the Board of Education, member of the administration can attend. We have a large number of people that we're going to be honoring and inducting into the Hall of Fame this year. It's going to be taking place at the Armory. Um, anyone interested, members of the public, of course, that are interested in attending, you can contact Vanessa Stankovich, who happens to be the advisor of that award-winning, um, cheerleading squad. Um, phone number, I understand, is 732-376-6030, extension 23419. Um, with that quick public service announcement, uh, over, I have a quick question for the board. I maybe misunderstandingly or incorrectly understood that there was going to be a presentation today about the new high school. Is that in fact happening, or no?
We'll address that afterward, after you're done. We don't want to waste your time.
Oh, no problem. I, I just, alright, so, I was going to mention, I had some questions with regards to the concerns you could very well imagine that the community has, parking, uh, traffic capacity, but if that's going to be addressed, I didn't want to bring that up specifically because that would be repetitious, so, but I'm interested, so when the appropriate time comes, I'm hoping to hear that. That's all. Folks, thank you so much. I hope everyone has a great evening.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon, Board of Education members. Um, my name is Elizary Most. I'm here, um, sorry, I'm nervous. I'm a student at Perth Amboy High School. Um, I just have something to adjust regarding the uniform policy. Um, I did create a poll, and the poll consists of like 182, uh, people that voted no to uniforms, and it was like other different, um, options and things that you can also say regarding your opinion on it.
Is it possible for you to speak a little? I want to make sure that we hear everything you have to say.
Sure. Out of the 182 people that responded, 100% said no, that they didn't want the uniform policy. Um, some of the people that responded to the question that said, "If there was no uniform policy, what clothes should not be allowed in school?" Um, I'm just going to read three. Um, one of them said, "If there was no uniform policy, crop tops, revealing shirts, and any other clothing pieces that reveal too much skin should not be allowed, uh, to be worn in school." Another one said spaghetti shirts, crop tops. Uh, another person said very open and revealing clothes. I know it's kind of hypocritical, uh, hypocritical me talking about uniform policy, and I have sweats on. This is not how I come to school. I come to school in cargo pants and my cheer gear. But I do have my clothes in rotation because, you know, trying to keep up with the whole policy, but I appreciate your, your time letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pepe, is there anyone remote that would like to speak?
So, we do have about four people in the, in the remote. Um, so, good evening. My name is Dr. Pepe. I'm the IT Director. I'm going to be moderating the remote public portion of the meeting tonight. For remote members who wish to speak, we use the Raise Your Hand feature in Microsoft Teams. For those of you calling in remotely, to raise your hand, you need to press star five and follow the system prompts to unmute. Do I have any remote participants that wish to speak? No remote participants with their hands raised who wish to speak.
So, I need a motion to close our public session?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Yep. I'll take the liberty now to speak a little bit about the high school. I was going to speak about it during the superintendent report, the new high school. We're still currently working out, um, different scenarios regarding parking. As you can, as you can well imagine, the school district is responsible for many aspects of, uh, the school. When it comes to parking, that's something that we're working collegially and collaboratively with the city to try to see what we could do. I can tell you that we've tried to procure several different locations, to no avail, um, without getting into the specifics of that, uh, as it relates to different areas around the school that allows us to have parking for our staff and for even parents during the morning. This is something that's been going on, uh, that predates anyone sitting here, myself included, that they spoke about when they first talked about the new high school and the size of new high school and parking. So, this is about a 15-year conversation. I can tell you for the last 10 years, we've been talking about it as well, but the SDA has only given us, and I shouldn't say only, the SDA has generously given us a $3 million, $300 million school building, um, but the parking is something that, uh, was not included in that, I guess, build. The, more information regarding, uh, although city is working with the Board of Ed in bi-weekly meetings, I'd say, right? Bi-weekly meetings with Mr. LaBrice and, uh, Mr. Rodriguez to try to find alternatives to parking. The reality is that that's going to be, uh, a difficult solution to, um, solve in this community, given the tight space of not the surrounding neighborhood, but also the size of that building. As it relates to what will be transpiring with the new high school, that's something that we are going to be expressing in May and June. In April, we'll give out a little bit more information, um, in reference to what unfolds right now. They're still in the process of getting COs, so we're not at that stage yet to talk about what we could do. We may have to, so that we're clear here, change the, uh, grand opening date due to many different variables, but I was assured today, I had a conversation with the SDA, that we will definitely be opening up the high school in September. So, sometime over the summer, there'll be a grand opening, and we'll get information out within the next two weeks about what that date is, and waiting for one more confirmation to ensure that we have all of our, our ducks aligned and order. And then at that point in time, we'll talk about what that transition looks like. In the interim, we already have, uh, hired moving company at the last agenda. We placed them there. We're waiting for the contract from them to be given to us, as we want some things put in there as it relates to the finite aspects of whether or not, uh, they don't deliver on the moving aspects, what would happen, although they assure us that they could get it done over the summer. Next year, there will be 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th in that high school, which means that South and East Buildings will no longer be with us, but we're going to hold on to them for a little while to ensure that we transition an ease of, uh, movement. We have our Director of Operations, Carmen Southward, working with our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. LaBrice, and myself, and Dr. Medina, daily having conversations and updates as to where are we, how are we moving, what are we moving. I can assure you, staff will have ease of transition as we will be providing a lot of the movement, except for personal belongings. We will provide boxes, and we'll get much more into that as we get a better understanding as to the final date of the new high school. Did I miss anything? No? Nope? Okay? Okay. That concludes my, uh, update for right now on the new high school.
Thank you for that. So, now we're going to be having, um, our interviews for our vacant, um, board member position. If you could pre, please bring in the first candidate. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
So, we have a series of questions provided by the board, and our first question is from our board member, Mr. Luis Marte, who is remote at the moment, so he will be asking his first question.
Yes, good evening. Uh, can you hear me at all?
Yes, I can.
Alright, perfect. In case, uh, you need me to repeat the question, just, just let me know. I know it's a little difficult through the phone. So, there's the first question. It says, "What perspective would you bring to this board that may not already be present if you are selected to fill the vacancy?"
Well, I'm not quite sure of everyone else's perspective, um, so, one of the things that is, is near and dear to me, that I'm sure you guys look at, um, frequently, is special education. So, um, I'm constantly looking for new legislation regarding that particular topic, and, um, so I like to stay abreast as to what the state and what the federal government is doing in that area.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was me or...
No, yes. Mr. Marte, can you mute yourself? Thank you, and I'm so sorry. We didn't even give her the opportunity to introduce herself. I'm sorry. Can you introduce yourselves?
Sure. I'm Diane Crawford, um, a former teacher in this district and a resident all of my life.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Um, our second question?
Good evening, Ms. Crawford.
Good evening.
In your opinion, what's the most pressing issue or problem facing our school system, and how would you try to solve it?
Well, I know, uh, that teacher shortage is, is one, uh, area of concern. Um, again, I said I've been looking at some of the legislation that's coming in from the state, and I know, for instance, that the governor signed, uh, in February, I believe, to have paraprofessionals that are working in districts. If they're interested in becoming teachers, they are given the opportunity to do student teaching and continue their education in those districts that they're working in with their pay. Now, I'm not sure if, um, we have solicited information from any of our powers that may now hold a degree that might be interested in becoming teachers, but that could be an avenue that we pursue. The... The, um, Commissioner of Education is being charged with putting a pilot program into place to recruit male minorities to a mentoring program. $95,000 a year has been allocated, or will be allocated, I'm not sure if this one has passed, uh, for those three years that this pilot program is in effect. So, if I was a board right now, I would probably be looking at our teaching colleges, uh, in the surrounding area and maybe entering into MOUs with them, because it has to do with their students, their male students that are graduating and have to be in their senior year. If we could identify our own, um, minority men that are in our district now, they can become mentors, so that could be another avenue for us, for future teachers. So, just looking at various ways to help solve that particular problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now for our third question?
Good evening, Ms. Crawford.
Good evening, Mr. George.
As you know, the Perth Amboy Board of Education is comprised of nine members who work collectively to serve the students, faculty, and staff of our district. Can you share one professional or personal experience where you had to work as a team to reach a goal, where you may differ in opinion from the, this group, and what was the outcome?
Well, sometimes when you're in a, um, situation where you... When I started teaching, uh, I had self-contained classrooms, so I was by myself. And eventually, I became the second teacher in the classroom. So, sometimes just that, uh, marriage, if you will, can be difficult if there isn't a collaboration and a meeting of the minds and understanding your roles in, as a general ed teacher and a sped teacher. Sometimes I may not agree with how a particular thing is being done, so, I'm not going to say that I always disagreed, but I would make my differences known, and then we would work in, in a way that was better for the child. So, that's my answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Crawford. My name is Jasmine. The question I have for you today is, "What ideas would you bring to the table to improve staff morale?"
I think, um, what ideas do I have? I think transparency. You know, sometimes when, when we're sitting out here and we're hearing the things that you say to us as a board, we may not always feel that you're being as transparent as you can be. And that leaves us not really knowing. So, one of the reasons that this position is something that I wanted to do is because, you know, practical experience is better than speculation. So, um, and I feel that in this district, because I do know so many of the teachers, when I do encounter relationships, when I do encounter those teachers, they trust what I say, and they hear what I have to say. So, sometimes having someone in, from my perspective on the board that does have that relationship, it, it helps. So, that in itself, just me being who I am, could foster a better morale between the board and teachers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Crawford. How are you?
Good evening, Megan.
In the past year, we have implemented many new programs. Which particular one would you change and why?
Uh, and I have to admit that I'm not really familiar with all the new programs that you've implemented. Um, are you talking academic programs, or... I know that the board probably feels that they get a lot of teacher input, so I'm not going to say you're lacking teacher input. That's what I'm going to say. You're really lacking teacher input. And sometimes, and I know that over the years, you've always wanted teachers to be able to take their ideas back to administration and then have administration bring those ideas to you. I know that there's a hierarchy that we need to follow, but sometimes, it's just good when you can avail yourselves just to sit and listen to teachers talk. So, not necessarily a program, but just listening to what they have to say. Get their input.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Crawford.
Good evening.
Gandhi once said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." What change would you make in this district that would impact our students and education?
Well, I would like to see us as board members be a little bit more involved in the schools. And a long time ago, that used to happen. I understand that there were some rules that we have to follow and regulations, but I think it's good when your staff can see you out on an occasion in the schools. Like we had reading across America a couple of weeks ago, maybe some schools are still doing it, I'm not sure, but I'm not sure how many of you were able to come and spend some time with the kids and read to them, let them know that you're board members. On an occasion, you might think that administrators that don't, they don't want to see you, but they do. And that helps us to know that you're not just sitting here making policies. I know that's our main goal, is to sit and make policies, various departments, looking at curriculum, things of that nature. But people need to know that you care. And so, like I said before, for me, practical experience beats speculation. So you have a lot of people on the outside talking because they don't see you. And so that's something I would like to be able to change. And not necessarily change because I'm going to force my way through the door, but even if that means talking to other boards where those rules come from, then that's something I'm willing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you think that a board of education members' perspective is helpful to or defer from administration and/or the staff?
Well, we don't have time as teachers. Teachers don't have time, and I'm not sure how many administrators have time to really sit and read to get an understanding of what the state is doing differently, or what the federal government is doing differently. So I think that that's something that we take on as board members, that we may be in a position to hone in on different things that is going on in the state, and when it's happening, and how soon it's going to affect us, where, you know, your staff and your staff may not have that time to do that. So I think that we are important from that angle. You know, we get information firsthand, and then that information has to be disseminated amongst everybody else. So for that reason, a board is necessary. And not only that, to set policy, to set some ground rules for everyone to follow, from the child to the adult. Did I answer your question? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is your last question.
Thank you.
As a board of education member, you may be placed in the position of making decisions that could be unpopular, criticized, or misunderstood by others, because you cannot always reveal the facts. How will you manage those moments within the scope and responsibilities of your role?
Discretion is always a major part of any board, not just a school board. So, I believe, though, when we're in a position to say, "This is something that I really can't talk about, I wish I could," then that's what I would say. "This is something I can't talk about, and I wish I could." It's not only to protect the board, but it's also to protect the person that, or the situation that we might be involved in. And that's true no matter where I was. Even when I was AFT president, the same thing happened, you know? And because then I was more visible as a teacher, a lot of times, people thought that I could, you know, "You could talk to me about this, it's not going anywhere." That's not the point. The point is, is that confidentiality is a must, and if it's something that I could talk about, then I would. And that would be my answer.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Please hang around. Your questions are, we're done with your questions. You can take a deep breath.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. My name is Daisy Peralta, and I'm the board president. We will have a few questions for you. We will start with Mr. Marte, but before we do, if you would like to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Katherine Estefas. I'm a resident of Perth Amboy. My background is, in corporate America, I took a step back to become a mom, and I feel like, in this stage of my life, I want to give back to my community. It's been leading this way. I'm the PTO president of our school. I'm also on a board that, you know, promotes certain things for children. And now, this seat was open, and I thought it would be a good place for me to start serving my community. And that's where I am now, that's why I'm here today.
Thank you. Mr. Marte, you can start.
Yes, good evening. Like I mentioned before too, in the case of you needing to repeat a question, just ask. I'm a little noisy out here. So the question is as follows. What perspective would you bring to this board that may not already be present if you are elected to fill the vacancy?
Mr. Marte, can you repeat the question? You sounded a little far.
Yes. What perspective would you bring to this board that may not already be present if you are selected to fill the vacancy?
I'm not quite sure that my perspective might not be already present in the board. I know that there are a lot of people that sit at the board that are already accomplished and that are serving the community, but from being chosen in my perspective, I have a number of skill sets that I have learned in my years in corporate America. The skill set from the perspective of a parent, and as a perspective of a person that lives in the city of Perth Amboy, we all have different ways of viewing things, and I feel that when we sit down and have the meeting of the minds, all of our experiences have that, all our experiences take part in what shapes our perspective. So to that point, I think my experiences might be unique, but my perspectives may not be. So my experiences, my skill sets, and, you know, my career can help provide that perspective, that unique perspective.
Thank you. With our second question, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, Katherine. In your opinion, what's the most pressing issue or problem facing our school system, and how would you try to solve it?
That's a very good question, given that I understand that there are a lot of challenges in the school system today. I think that the biggest challenge from my perspective is parental engagement. I think that not enough parents are engaged in their children's education, and I think that that is the missing component. I think that teachers and the administration take on a lot, and the parents kind of, at this point, ship their children to school and expect everyone to do the work. I think that we need to see more parental engagement, and I think that we need to start doing that by simple things, just like grassroots things, PTO. That's something that I participate in my children's school, and I think that that kind of grows a community within the school that can help to create that engagement and make parents more curious about what's going on in schools and with their children, and maybe they would want to also in turn take part and be part of their community, their school community.
Thank you. Good evening. The Perth Amboy Board of Education is comprised, as you know, of nine members who work collectively to serve the students, faculty, and staff of our district. Can you share one professional or personal experience where you had to work as a team to reach a goal, where you may differ in opinion from that group, and what was the outcome?
I've had a lot of those experiences. In a role that I had, I worked with several people in different departments. My role was always client-facing, so I was the one that went and showed things to the client, and then they kind of put things together in the background. And the way that they would put things worked for them, because in their mind, they were technically savvy, but they didn't know how to present that to the client, and I had to kind of explain it to them, that that was not going to go over well when we faced our client, because they may not have that technological intelligence as much as they do. So it took some massaging to get them to understand that they had to fix their product to make it more palatable to the end user, as opposed to what they would be looking at. And I was kind of like a liaison, if you will. And we sat down and we talked about it, and I kind of role-played to get them to understand, instead of kind of being forceful. I think people want to be heard so badly sometimes, that they forget that the easier way is just to show someone, instead of trying to force your opinion. So that was one of the experiences that I had.
Good evening, Ms. Estefas. My name is Jasmine. The question I have for you today is, "What ideas would you bring to the table to improve staff morale?"
What ideas? You know, I would like to get to know everyone first, right? We all operate differently, we all have different motivations. I think that saying that I have ideas, I wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair to say that I have ideas. I'm kind of like a blank slate, because I like to get to know everyone and understand who people are before I start imposing ideas or even implementing them. But I think that I would, I'm a cheerful person, I'm very high-energy. My daughters sometimes are like, "Mom, please, you know, it's enough." So I think that, once I get to know everyone, it's going to be easier for me to motivate that morale, based on every individual as a person, because not everyone motivates us, and not everything, you know, stimulates us and gets us to boost our morale in the same way. So I think that me getting in there and understanding who everyone is, and then, you know, just being who I am and being cheerful and, you know, trying to work towards our mutual goals would help boost that morale. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Estefas. How are you? So my question is, "In the past year, we have implemented many new programs. Which particular one would you change and why?"
Well, I'm not well-aware with all the programs that have been implemented. My children, at the moment, go to the charter school. So I wouldn't be fair, it wouldn't be fair to say that I would change anything. I will say that I've seen a lot of programs come out that have been very enriching to children. I was born and raised in Paterson, New Jersey, and a lot of the extracurricular activities that they have here are amazing for children to be engaged. I don't think that I would change it, I think that we need to build upon it, get more engagement, like I said, through parental engagement, get people to be more involved, but I'm very limited in my scope of understanding the programs that are, that have been rolled out.
Thank you. Good evening. Ms. Estefas, how are you? So my question is, "In the past year, we have implemented many new programs. Which particular one would you change and why?"
Well, I'm not well-aware with all the programs that have been implemented. My children, at the moment, go to the charter school. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be fair, it wouldn't be fair to say that I would change anything. I will say that I've seen a lot of programs come out that have been very enriching to children. I was born and raised in Paterson, New Jersey, and a lot of the extracurricular activities that they have here are amazing for children to be engaged. I don't think that I would change it, I think that we need to build upon it, get more engagement, like I said, through parental engagement, get people to be more involved, but I'm very limited in my scope of understanding the programs that are, that have been rolled out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Estefas. My question for you is, Gandhi once said, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." What change would you make in this district that would impact our students and education?
That is a motto that I live by. If we don't walk the walk, then how can we talk the talk? Again, my, just speaking from, as a parent, and speaking as someone that has dealt with other parents, I would like to see there be a change in the way that parents are involved in the school. I think that there is a lot of contention with parents and teachers, because the parents are just not engaged. They don't understand what's happening in the schools, because there may be a cultural barrier. And what I, what change I would like to see is to see more people like me, more parents, be willing to help and be a partner with their teachers, with the administration. I'd like there to be more cooperation. So, that is a change that I would like to see. That is a change that I would love to work towards. I think that's an integral part that has been missing, and if that were to change, a lot could change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
How do you think that a board of education members' perspective is helpful to or differ from administration and/or staff?
That is a good question. I think that administration has to follow a set of guidelines. I know that there are several procedures that must be followed as far as administration is concerned. I think the board offers a different perspective, in that we bring our own side, our own experiences, our own careers, and our own standings in our community as a different perspective in comparison to the administration that's trying to drive towards a goal. They may have that directive that's coming, you know, from on high, and the board can provide a different perspective and maybe find harmony somewhere in between the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Estefas.
Good evening.
I have your last question. As a board of education member, you may be placed in the position of making decisions that could be unpopular, criticized, or misunderstood by others, because you cannot always reveal all the information. How will you manage those moments within the scope and responsibilities of your role?
That's also a very good question. Sometimes, we're put in positions of authority, and people don't always understand what we're doing, and of course, there's confidentiality, so those things must be observed. But I find that when you talk to a person and you are trying to understand them, you too can make yourself understood without giving a lot of information. Sometimes, it's just finding a common thing that you share and trying to reach that person in that space, so that they can know that you're not trying to be unfair, you're just trying to do the best for everyone involved. And in the position that you, that you all are in, sometimes that's difficult. And you never know until you're actually sitting in that chair, right? So you need to just express that. I think if we're transparent about that to people, they understand, because there are a lot of things that people don't tell, right? So, we have that commonality as people, that we operate, you know, and we do certain things that we may not be fully transparent about, in hopes that, you know, people could understand, "This is why we do the things we do, we can't tell you too much, but this is who we are." So in that same scope, that's what I would do if I were faced with a situation of that magnitude.
Thank you for your interest in joining us as a board member. Just to let everyone know, the interviews will be, the candidates will be discussed during the executive session, and when we come back, we will have an answer for everyone, so just hang around. I promise it won't take too long, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
So you can get comfortable.
Thank you again. Thank you for your time.
Whereas pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10:4-12B, 1 through 9. Now... her and for you. And I'll tell you why. Your willingness to be open-minded, your willingness to see the other side and recognize that sometimes, it's not exactly what's being portrayed, but there's another piece, and we talked about that this evening, of things that can't be said, confidentiality for many other reasons. I respect you for listening to the other side and for then making a weighted decision on the facts and not on the myths or the perceptions of what people or individuals or groups could think possibly what was happening and looking at the truth. In addition, the high school is coming forward, and for the rest of your life, as a young student that was once in this building and had your own plight, and I remember those days and those conversations, to then be a board member, you helped to build that school with the decisions that you made. You helped to do a lot of the things that this board has been able to do. The successes are due to all the board members and their continuity of exactly what I just said. For that, I'm forever grateful, and I want to tell you that I thank you for that, and I appreciate your willingness, again, to really be open-minded in the back room and say, "Hey, let me hear this and see a different perspective." We didn't always agree, and that's okay. But the thing that I like is that you are always respectful about disagreeing. And sometimes, people don't understand that. Being respectful and disagreeing is okay. So thank you.
Thank you again, and we would like to give you something for your time here and all the well-spent time that you dedicated to this district.